Hi, I'm Jeremy Crosby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're your hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every weekday, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can find all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues affecting you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
I call to order the meeting of the Committee of the Whole on March 19th, 2025 at 7:01 PM. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Next up is roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Alder Allen is absent with excuse. Mayor Arata Frata? Alder Dantzler?
Here.
Alder Gerhart?
Here.
Alder Herbst is delayed, we believe. Alder Jetzer?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Alder Vafidari is absent with excuse. And Alder Wheeler?
Here.
Give a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you, Chad. Next item of business is the approval of the minutes. I'll need a motion on the February 26, 2025 Committee of the Whole Agenda Minutes.
I move to approve.
I'll move.
Motion by Bill, second by Donald. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public appearances for non-agenda items. We have nobody in chambers nor online, so we can move on to our next item, item six, agenda items. Six A, Geographic Information Systems, GIS Public Resources. We're joined today by Dakota Doran, our GIS Coordinator. We're delighted to have you. We have so many interesting resources on our city website that are available to the public. Obviously, there's more that's available to city staff, but really, really valuable resources that I think more people should know about. So we're so excited to have you here tonight to present. And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So as you said, I'm here to talk about public GIS resources. And I'm the GIS Coordinator. So I'll jump right into it here. So what is GIS? Geographic Information Systems, as you said. It's a blend of geography and information systems and IT. And it's a technology used to create, manage, analyze, and map all types of data. There's a common saying in the geospatial community that 80% of data collected is spatial. And it seems really high, but if you try to think of data that isn't spatial, it kind of makes sense. On the right here, you can see just kind of an example of what a GIS might look like. So you have various types of data. Raster data at the bottom here, land use and elevation. Parcels, which are polygons, streets are lines, and points are customers. So you can overlay all of that, and you can start to infer things from that and make decisions. So why do we need GIS? Well, Pittsburgh is changing. As you all know, we have had rapid population and infrastructure growth. We need to be able to maintain that infrastructure and support that population. So GIS helps create efficiencies in processes across the organization, migrate away from paper resources, and provide powerful visualizations and analytics. In the image here, you can see this is 1984 Pittsburgh when we first became a city. There's not much there. If we scroll across here, you can just see how much we've changed in 40 years. And we will continue to change. Really brief history of GIS at the city. In 2000, the city did a GIS Needs Assessment Plan. That plan recommended in 2002 that the city hire a GIS technician. The following year, a split role, Public Works position was hired. That was an engineering technician, but also had a portion GIS dedicated. I took that position in 2017 and then went full-time. Well, I was already full-time, but I went full-time in the IT department as the GIS Coordinator. So what are my tasks? What do I do? Well, I wear many hats. I do database administration. I update our local and cloud infrastructure and data. I manage users, licenses, and permissions. I update the city addressing with Access Day and OpenGov. I do data analytics, so I generate meaningful statistics for reports, grants, and stakeholders to make those data-driven decisions. I make visualizations and maps as requested by staff and the public, and I maintain those online, as we'll see here in a little bit. I do, I get out from behind the desk occasionally. I do some surveying in the field. I have my, I'm a licensed drone operator. We do have some drones here at the city. And then I do some programming to help try to create efficiencies in my work, so I have more time to do other things, essentially. Briefly touch on this, but just like our architecture at the city. So there's desktop software where we do a lot of editing and analysis and those types of things. And then there's the cloud environment, which is called ArcGIS Online, and that's what we're going to look at here soon. And in ArcGIS Online, there's tons of types of different data. So there's applications, story maps, which we'll see, the hub site, which is our open data portal. That is our public-facing GIS resource. And then we have various field maps for field crews to go out in the field and make edits and changes to data. This is our, so I like to be able to monitor both our local stuff, but also our cloud infrastructure. So this is a dashboard that gets updated nightly, just showing kind of changes to our database over time. So you can see what people are working on, how much they're working on it, and like which individuals that is. Similarly, I have the online version. This one tracks our web app usage. So you can kind of see total views by day. You can filter different timelines. And just so I can see what people are using, what maybe people aren't using. Just a useful resource to have. As I mentioned, we have the desktop software, so that's where a lot of analysis happens. So there's a lot of projects I'm doing currently where I'm using this software to make like suitability models or various other maps for park and open space plan, you know, bike pad plan, things like that. ArcGIS Online, as I've said already, is the public-facing one, also the one staff uses in the field. Gabrielle, as you mentioned, we do have a lot of internal applications and maps that are more focused on, you know, asset management or things staff need to do their jobs more efficiently. But now we'll jump into the public-facing side of things. So some of you may have already been to this before, but this is our open data portal. The landing page here, you get some statistics. And as you scroll down, there's categories of different data. To start it off, it's applications. So these are the publicly available applications at the city. And then story maps, which we'll jump into here soon. And then I do maintain some PDF maps, mostly for clerks for like elections, so they can post them at the polling locations. But there are some other ones on here for people that maybe aren't as fluent with web maps. Another useful addition and part of the open data portal is allowing residents, but also like engineering firms and consultants to be able to download our data selectively. But it is cut down on a lot of open data requests because they're able to come here, say they need to like access our storm sewer. They can come right into it if it loads. And there's our inlets in the city. They can download it in various formats. And then they can also just pull it right into any web maps they want with the URLs here. And then they're able to take those layers and put them onto their plan sets that they're making for projects within the city. Instead of me having to go in and manually snip out areas of the city where their project is, it just, it saves a lot of time. So different tiers of government maintain different types of data. So I listed some other relevant open data portals here. So DNR, obviously, water resources and other naturalist-type data would be there. The LIO maintains our countywide imagery, parcels, layers of that nature. So kind of by combining the municipal open data with those other agencies, you can kind of get whatever you need. And then lastly, at the bottom here is just some, kind of like a one-stop shop for open government, so you can get to our ordinances, our social medias, agendas, OpenGov, things like that. Things like that. So it's all just right here, easy for people to get to. So before I jump into this, I will just jump out and we'll go into some examples.
Dakota?
Yes. Oh yeah, I forgot to mention, jump in whenever you want for questions.
Yeah, so what's the official process by which we could request another map? Like, I think it'd be cool to see, for instance, you know, a heat map of property taxes collected from across the city, possibly normalized based on the number of people there, you know, that kind of thing. I'm sure there's countless other ideas that we'll come up with in the future, but like if we want something like that, what's the level of effort? And how do we go about requesting something like that?
Oh, I can speak to the level of effort. That's just kind of project-dependent. So like that heat map one, I mean, the county maintains the parcel data, which would have the tax amounts in the parcel data. So theoretically, not too difficult. As far as requesting those maps, I don't know if, Chad, you want to?
Yeah, I can weigh in on that. If you want to contact me, Adam, and/or the department head in this case, which is our IT Director, Nick Joseph, to make those requests. That way, folks can talk to Dakota, determine how much workload may take of his capacity to create that new map, what he's currently working on, and those sorts of things, and get a better idea of what our ability is to do that and what a timeline might be. So yeah, just feel free to reach out to any of us.
I will say that it will be great to have it because we have a lot of issue with new development sometime and about, you know, how much the density of multifamily paying taxes compared to other areas. So I will see that it's going to be good to have that type of information. I have seen those map. I don't know, a previous, former mayor has that map, so I don't know if it was developed here or no, but it was done in the past. This is how, I don't know. I have seen those maps, but I don't know from where they got it.
Are you, you don't, are you, are you familiar with an organization called Urban 3?
Not, no.
Okay. They worked with strong talents to produce maps like that? And so it's basically, you know, you're looking at a 2D picture of the city, and then in the third dimension, you can see colors and height to differentiate the amount of taxes and collected on a per-acre basis, things like that.
The 3D is definitely doable, too. We have that ability with the software.
Yeah. And I guess maybe taking a step back, you listed an awful lot of things that you do. Most of those didn't sound like they were directly GIS-related. So, I mean, is that, is that accurate? You do an awful lot of stuff, GIS is one of those things?
Yes, many hats. I think GIS is just kind of like a broad occupation, I guess.
Well, like your database administration, for instance. Is that generic across the city? Or is that specific to GIS-related tasks?
So I would, I maintain the GIS database. So not, I'm not doing any of the other stuff. That's my other IT coworkers that manage our city databases.
Okay, so then like, you said you also manage software licensing and stuff. Is that specifically for the GIS then?
Specifically for GIS.
So you're like an island.
I'm an island, yes. I ask myself like questions. That's what I have to do. All right. So yeah, we'll just jump in. Feel free to reach back out if you have questions. But so this is probably the default map most people will probably go to. It's just our public GIS viewer. So it just has a variety of different layers on it. You can change the base map. We recently got the 2024 imagery from the Flydane project. So that's pretty interesting, three-inch imagery, countywide. And up here in the top, you can kind of toggle different data. It's kind of broken out sort of by department. So if you click on like parks, for instance, all of these have pop-ups associated with them, so you can get a picture of the park. And then it, it kind of crawls through like the attribute table, and it'll give you the amenities that are specific to that park that you clicked on. Same thing with all these. You can jump in and see, you know, our storm utility or our sanitary sewer. When you click on these, you can see, you know, pipe diameter, material, length, stuff of that nature. The road ratings around here. Various data, so there's, there's just a lot in here.
One thing I've noticed about GIS maps is that they seem to have an awful lot of ephemeral problems. Like, I'll go in one day and everything's fine, and I'll go in the next day and suddenly a layer is missing. Or I click on something and, you know, I can see the icon flash, but absolutely nothing happens. And then a couple days later, I go back in and it's fine again.
Yep.
Okay, so that's?
That's generally not even me making a change to anything. That's kind of Esri in a nutshell, I guess. Yeah. The next app here is Find My Information. This one, there's no map even associated with this one. It's on the, it's on the backend. But essentially, if you type in an address, we'll just do City Hall. It's just a one-stop shop for information related to that address. So you can find out like the school district, gas and electric service provider, collection day for trash, so that, your civic information, so who your representatives are. So that's a nice one for people to use. I use this one quite a bit to kind of keep up to date on the projects that are going on with the city. This is all of our planning applications we've received over the last few years. Generally, it helps to go in here and filter by date. And then you can click into a project, see the applicant information, project description, and you're able to actually just pull up the plans or whatever was submitted with that application. So that one's, that one's pretty useful, at least for me. This one's a newer map or dashboard that I put out, Capital Project Dashboard. So this kind of is attempting to make our CIP a little more digestible for some folks. So it gives you just a brief overview of how many projects, the budget. Projects are alphabetical here. And if you click into one, it'll zoom you to the project. If it has geometry, some of these are just more administrative projects, so they wouldn't have anything associated with it. You get the description, cost, the status, who the contact is, and then the budget by year. There's also a tab for the breakout of the money over the years and by project type. The, yeah, the amount. And you can filter up here as well, if you want to just see.
And so Dakota, here's another one of those quirks, and I, I don't know if I'm misremembering or if this is actually an issue, but I feel like I should be able to click on one of the colorful lines on the map, and then it should take me to the project. And I thought it did that, but then I tried it later and it didn't.
Yes, so this one's a little weird. Because of all those administrative projects, I have to assign them a geometry to get them to show up in the map. So they have the geometry of the city boundary. So when you click into it, if you don't click perfectly within the polygon, you won't get the project that you're specifically trying to get. So if you're pretty zoomed out, it might misclick. Yeah, I was aware of that, that bug. It's kind of annoying. This, this one's a park and open space amenities application. See, this one allows you to filter by amenities. So if you want to just see where there's basketball hoops, you can filter to just those parks that have basketball hoops, and then it'll show you the list of parks here. And when you expand it, you'll get information related to that. And it'll zoom to it in this instance. So that one's pretty nice. The Pittsburgh Trees Dashboard. We recently, well, I guess maybe it was like a year and a half ago now, had the tree inventory updated citywide. So this is displaying that information, and now we're continuing to upkeep that, of course. But a lot of trees. You can filter those trees by clicking over here if you just want to see where specific species of tree are, or by the genus here, if you want to see just maple trees or just oak trees. And then you can always click in here as well to get individual tree information. And there's some data there as well.
And to be clear, those are only the trees that the city has planted and is maintaining. There are countless others in the city.
Yes.
That are growing wild.
This does not include private trees. Correct. So this would be an example.
Dakota, if I may, that includes the information from the recent tree inventory that was completed, correct?
Yes.
Excellent, yeah, thank you for that.
And whatever we've planted and planting plants since.
Sure, thanks.
Yep. So this is an example of a story map. This one's for our park and open spaces. Again, this is kind of a more digestible park and open space plan, in a sense. So if you scroll down here, you get a nice overview of our park system. There's tabs at the top if you want to jump around to different types of park facilities. And when you scroll down, you get description of a community park. You can see our community parks, and then you can zoom in and out to locate those. And then when you continue to scroll, it goes into the individual parks themselves and includes the amenities they have there and a description. So that's just kind of an example of that. You can continue along to various other tabs, maybe? There we go. So like bike, there's our, our bike facilities overlaid with our parks and description of some of our regional trails. So that would be, that would be an example of a, of a story map there. So there are other apps. That's just a kind of a subset of examples I wanted to go through. But I guess I wanted to touch on some things that maybe we're going to work on in the future here. This year, I'm planning to upgrade us to ArcGIS Enterprise, which probably means nothing to you guys, but for me, it'll create a lot of efficiencies in my workflows. It'll also allow field edits to sync directly back into our network and into our database. Like, as soon as you submit them, they're available right on your computer. So there's not two silos of data, essentially. It merges them together. So it'll just be way more efficient, and it'll allow us to do a lot more asset management, essentially. Further integration with city departments. So I think when I started in this position, there weren't, I mean, there were definitely power users of GIS already, like Public Works and Planning. Over the course of a couple years now, I've started to dive into other departments. And part of that is just me kind of sitting on the outside, listening to them, what their needs are, seeing what their workflows are, and then kind of putting myself in there to see how I could create something that helps them out. So that's something that I've been working on. And then I'm always trying to offer expanded app and solution offerings, so just continuing to put more new stuff out there, whether that's requests from you guys or something that I just think of, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you have anything about the HNI?
I do. I have, I have it in the GIS Viewer, so it is an app you can turn on in here. I don't remember what data is in there. I'm working with Jessica a little bit. I created her an application that she's kind of messing with right now. And then I'm waiting for her to kind of figure out what other data she'd like in there. And once she provides that to me, I can make a more built-out application.
Okay.
Dedicated to HNI. These last two are kind of maybe more like wish list items, I guess, but it's just showing you like what could be possible with GIS. ArcGIS Indoors is something Esri rolled out recently. So everything I've mentioned up to this point has been stuff you're mapping outside. But there's a lot of stuff in the building that needs to be maintained and tracked. And, you know, people, buildings have office numbers. There's equipment assigned to certain buildings. There's utilities inside a building. You can even get into like office hoteling and even indoor navigation. If, you know, someone doesn't know where a meeting room is, they can see on a map and even navigate there. So those are things that Esri is pushing out, and some, some places are starting to adopt that. Then this last one is just pretty cool, so I put it in here. But augmented reality utilities. I'm sure Brian, our locator, would love this. But since we do have that accurate elevation information for our utilities, you're able to basically put that 3D and overlay it with your phone's position, and you're able to, yeah, basically see what's under the road. So that's pretty cool.
Now, if you can get it to in real time, show you the break in the water main.
I'm sure they would love that.
Well, this, this actually kind of segues into a question I had, which is, can you integrate with Google Street View?
To my knowledge, no. I think it's a licensing thing with Google. I think they locked it down, that you can't do that. But I could look more into that. I'll make a note of it.
Can we have like during a snow, a storm, you know, a snowstorm like following, following our Public Works track to determine where they are in the city? Because sometimes, you know, president call and they say, "Why is not, they are not coming to my street?" Or "Where they are?", you know? Can you do that with this thing or no? We need another software?
We were just talking about that this week, actually. So definitely possible. Part of that would be moving to ArcGIS Enterprise. That would be a requirement. We have licensing for something called GeoEvent Server, which essentially allows real-time data to travel back and forth, like multiple times a second. That could be combined a couple of different ways with licensing we currently have, I think. Otherwise, I know Mark's snowplows are AVL-compatible, which I'm, I don't want to butcher the acronym, but I think it's like automatic vehicle locating or something like that.
I think it's, yeah, automated, automated.
Automated, okay, yes. So they are compatible with that. I don't think we have the devices currently that would allow us to do that. currently that would allow us to do that. But you could theoretically get it to work with like, if they just had like cell phones or tablets in their trucks. But it would be less sophisticated than AVL. AVL would even let you just, like, you would know when the plow was up or down. You would get accurate measurements of salt output, all sorts of cool data, essentially. With the phone route, you could still track where they've plowed. So you would get that live data of the route they're on and what they, what percent they've done of that route. You just wouldn't get that intricate information.
Is that how the Madison Metro buses are able to be tracked in real time?
Probably, yeah.
We have had AVL on the police vehicles for probably better part of 15 years, I would guess, maybe even 20. So we have, have implemented that technology already in certain applications. So it's definitely something that's feasible.
Mark was also talking about doing that with street sweeping as well, so they could tell where they've swept and if, how long it's been since they've been there, essentially. That might be a good demo case because there's only a couple sweepers.
I wonder if you can show, I don't know if you're disconnected, your screen is connected, for somebody that's going to the city website, how do they get to the GIS viewers?
Yeah.
If you can just kind of walk through that for people that might be wanting to find it themselves.
So two ways. You can go to Services here and click on GIS and Maps. That'll bring you right to that open data portal. Otherwise, if you scroll to the bottom here, under Popular Resources, there's GIS and Maps right there.
Awesome. Yeah, this all, this information is just outstanding. Every time I, I feel like I've been there and I always see something new every time I go. I'm like, oh, whoa, that's a new one. I think the tree one was the one I last was like really amazed by. One question I have is how, obviously, I know city staff uses GIS resources extensively in their work. Have we ever, are there committees that are using this or are aware of these resources in a way that's helpful to their work? Because I feel like some of the committees I sit on might be really interested in this. And I don't know if we've ever, if you've ever had an opportunity to do a presentation or if the staff, if you are aware of the staff contacts, walking through some of these resources with the commission members so that they can, they can use this to help their work?
So I think the plan, Plan and Application Viewer was from, came from Plan Commission as a request. But I haven't worked with other commissions. I did do a presentation to department heads last year, I believe. But yeah, not, not too much with commissions yet.
Yeah, I almost wonder, I mean, I don't think you necessarily have to be at everyone, but I, I almost wonder if it should be an agenda item, maybe after the new committees are set up and just talk about the GIS resources. Because I think it's helpful visualizing these things. I can see Parks Commission, Tree Committee, Transportation Transit, Port of Public Works, obviously. I don't know if you all use that when you're making decisions, but I just feel like there's so many useful applications for, for our public discussions as part of the, you know, city committees.
You can also, I just wanted to touch on this too. You can add, in that GIS viewer, you can add your own data or other data to it. So like here, I just typed in Unliving Atlas, which is, it's all public-facing data on ArcGIS Online that gets published by generally authoritative sources. This is just like historic tornado tracks for like the whole country. And you can click into each of these and see information about the tornado. You can do live weather. You can just search weather and it'll pull in, pull in like NOAA or whatever you want and overlay it in your application. So there's, I mean, the possibilities are kind of endless with, you can get it to do whatever you really want it to do, kind of.
Yeah, and aside from the glitches here and there, I do think it's pretty intuitive for people that are familiar with, as long as you're willing to just click lots of boxes and move around, you know, you might not know exactly what you're looking for, but if you click around, like you can find it and it's really, they're really fun to, I wish more people would go on. I think it's really fun to just find where you live and just see all the things that the city has that are there. And all the parts of the city that, that are around us that we use every day that we just don't really realize because we're not, we don't think about it in the way that a city staff member would.
So if we go on there and we add some stuff that's strictly session-based, so next time you visit the website, everything is, you're starting over from scratch. So you can't break anything. But on the other hand, you also can't like send a link to somebody and say, hey, check this out.
Yeah, I don't know if when you, because there is a share button in here. I don't know if that'll share it as it stands, like if it includes the additional layers you added or not. I'd have to test that out. But that'd be interesting to, to know.
And I presume there's integration with OpenStreetMap?
They do have, yeah, there's the OpenStreetMap base map on here. So you do have some of that in here. Esri also has a, I don't know if I have the community map on here. I don't. Esri also has a similar map. It's called the Community Map. Very similar to OpenStreetMap, though. They actually have hard tongue changing in here, which is nice, because I don't think Google has that yet.
Oh, wow. Any other questions? Sorry, I don't think I've seen any hands from our online council members, but please jump in if you have questions.
I was just going to add, a timely email that we got today in regards to Dakota's work in GIS. Our finance director was having a conversation with somebody from the Department of Revenue who is working on a presentation and had come across the TID maps that Dakota has created and was actually going to be using them in a presentation as examples of what can be done with GIS and TIDS. So congrats to Dakota for creating those maps and it's great that they're getting some outside recognition as well for their usefulness. So I think it's just kind of a snapshot of how powerful GIS is in all of the things that we're doing throughout government and then obviously a testament to the skillset and work that Dakota is doing as well.
Yeah, I think you're doing outstanding work. I, I think positions like yours in the city are such important positions that people don't really understand the value that they bring necessarily because you're taking, you're creating efficiencies and taking work off, you're specializing in work that other people might have otherwise had to do, but you're so good at it that you can do it really well and efficiently and save their time to do the other things that they're better at. And I think there's other positions like that, like we've talked about having a finance specialist, budget specialist that can help public work staff do budgeting that they have to do, but that's not really their expertise. So like, let's let the engineers do engineering and let's, let's the finance person do the finance. Admin staff is not nearly as valued as it should be in any industry. And they take off the work from so many staff, city staffers doing those things that seem like they might be easy, but if you're not, if you're not a good admin, you just, you can't do it. And they save so much time, they create so much efficiency. So I think there's all those positions across their city. And I, I hope that over time, we can invest in more of those. I was really happy that we were able to invest in your position to make it full-time back in 2022. And it's really exciting. There's so much publicly available that proves like the value of this, but also I think, I'm sure all that work you're doing behind the scenes that we can't see makes a huge difference as well. So thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, any last questions? Yeah?
No, I just, you know, Arthur C. Clarke said, "Any sufficiently advanced technology is indistinguishable from magic." And this is like, this whole GIS thing is on that spectrum, closer to magic, you know? It's, this was unheard of, you know, 10, 15 years ago. And, and now it's, it's become commonplace and it's just so useful.
I have a question. Where are the, do you have any economic development maps? You know, like keep about our company, manufacturing company where they're located? And do you have that or no?
I do, I do not. I've done some work with economic development, mostly with the TIDS. But nothing like that. I do have an assessing map where they have some information on, you know, various assessed properties that are commercial and things like that. But yeah, guess I should go talk to economic development.
So in which map are the TID?
They are, I believe they're in here. Oh, Administration.
Where is the one? I am in the website.
Change the base map. There we go.
It's in the main GIS viewer.
Oh, that one?
It's under the Administration tab. And in those TIDS, you have a link to the annual report and the project plan as well.
So is this, this is all TIDS that the city has had or?
Yes. I believe these are all the, these should all be active TIDS currently.
Well, it looks like there's at least a dozen of them there. And how many have we had in total so far? And not a whole lot more than that, right?
I think we're on 18 right now.
Yep.
Yeah, so of the active ones, we've created 18 total. So any of the inactive ones, like I think four has been closed. That was a TID six, I think, in Orchard Point. So those won't necessarily show up.
So the one that are here are the active one?
Correct. That's my understanding is those would all be the active ones?
And some of the colors are different too, because there's various amendments to the TIDS.
There are very what?
Amendments. So up here, like, what is this, 10? There's two, I think there was two amendments to this TID.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Are we planning on having a layer showing all the historical TIF districts as well?
If directed.
Well, awesome. I hope, I hope that anyone's watching will go hop on the city website and take a quick look, at least zoom in on your home and, and check it out, see what's around your home. But yeah, thank you so much for coming. This was outstanding.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Yeah. So we can move on to our next agenda item, Item 6B, Senior Center Volunteer Program Overview with our Senior Center Director Jill McCombe. And we'll give you a moment while you get set up.
I presume Jill's going to pull up a map and show us the location of the senior center.
Wait till you see the data I'm going to show you.
We're getting nerdy tonight. This is great.
Honey, I can't even understand what he's saying. All right. Okay. I'm ready when you guys are ready. Okay. All good? All right. So actually, it's not, it's not really a volunteer overview. It's a meal program overview. So March is Meals on Wheels Month. And as the mayor knows, she went out with one of our volunteers. So I'm going to quickly show you this wonderful video that Fact TV made for us, just to give you a nice overview of the meal program. You got sound? Hello? I am now, but now I'm not.
What the heck's going on here?
Worked before, didn't it? So nicely.
I'm just going to try to mute it here.
I even came up and practiced. So I would, I did. And it was great.
No, I'm not supposed to. Tell you what, let's stop this and start it again.
Okay.
I should let you do this because I can't see anything.
Oh, what do you want me to do?
Just, yeah, just make this stop.
Okay.
And re, let's try to reopen it.
Okay. Seriously.
Killing me.
I didn't, I didn't do anything.
Are we sure?
Might, should I plug into a different one?
Just try this and see what happens.
For so few to volunteer with, I've done a lot. This is, I have a driver.
I'm going to preface this by saying our volunteer is Erin, and she's actually Governor Eber's daughter. And she's been volunteering with us for quite some time. So it was fun to have our mayor go with Erin, so.
Ever, I come to the senior center, pick up the meals that I'm supposed to deliver. I have a list of who I'm delivering to. And then I go out and deliver each meal to each person or, or multiple people. Yeah. I had seen a little ad for it that they needed a driver. And I was like, well, that probably is something I technically can do. I had been looking for something else to volunteer with. I've done a lot with kids. I've done a lot with animals. And I was like, a new population to volunteer with. And then I had a friend who had an injury and she and I would usually walk together and we weren't able to do that. And she kind of gets like going out for coffee all the time. So we were like, well, we'll volunteer together. And that would be like our every other week meetup. And that's how it got started.
In Pittsburgh, we deliver to about 50 clients, home-delivered meals. And these clients have been deemed homebound, which means they only get out of their house to go to doctor's appointments or things like that. So we're there to help give them a nice hot meal Monday through Friday. We have five meal drivers go out each day. We have five different meal routes in Pittsburgh. Because Pittsburgh is kind of, our boundaries are a little bit wonky. So we have to have five different routes that go out. And each route has 10 or more clients on the route. And I rely heavily on volunteers. We have meal driver volunteers who come in, pick up the meals, go deliver the meals to all the clients, come back, drop off the coolers. And then they're, they are reimbursed mileage for the time that they were out delivering meals.
Giving back is for sure. But it's, it's amazing. I'm like, I usually deliver every other week, but sometimes it's a little bit more. But it's amazing that you get to know the people, you know? And you wouldn't think that a quick stop by, of what you get to know, you had to get to care about them. And that's definitely the, the best part of it. And then working as a team with the other people that make this all running is amazing.
Just having that meal delivered every day is, we always say it's more than just a meal. It's a safety check to make sure everybody's okay in the house. It's for oftentimes people's only visitor that they get during the day, only person that they talk to. But it also helps them continue to live independently just by having that meal cooked for them. And usually the meal is enough that people split it and have it for lunch and supper. So.
It may seem like something that you don't want to do because you're like, oh, drive around, deliver to strangers. But I promise that that's not what it's like. You get to know the people. They become like friends and family to you. The people you work with are friends. And it really doesn't take that long. And people are always willing to step in and help out if you can't make your shift. So I think that everyone should give it a shot.
So the whole goal of the senior center is to try and keep people living at home independently for as long as possible. So we're, we're trying to get it so that people don't have to go into skilled nursing facilities. And one of the things that we do at the senior center is provide meals on wheels. And it might be that somebody could live independently, but they just can't cook anymore.
Interesting to see how other people live. Everyone has a different living environment and it's important to remember that and remember what little things we can do to give back. And so I think anyone who does it, including the mayor, probably will get that message.
Please contact me. I am always looking for Meals on Wheels drivers. We, last year, the City of Pittsburgh Senior Center put out over just about 19,000 meals. That's congregate and home-delivered meals. So we've got a lot going on here. We've got a lot of meal routes that need to go out every day. So if you are interested at all in volunteering, you can contact me.
I again think that it's a whole team that makes it work and it's amazing what we can do for other people.
I tried as fast as I could. Okay. So I just want to mention, Mandy was supposed to be here tonight, but she wasn't able to. So I'm, I'm pitching in, but this is her slideshow. So she did a lot of work on putting together this PowerPoint. And secondly, I want to thank the mayor for coming out and seeing some of our folks in the community.
I would say that it was a great experience. I was having a bad week and then I, I went... I would say that it was a great experience, I was having a bad week, and then I, I went on Friday, and it was great to be doing that, because I, I realize it's not only for low-income seniors, it's, we visit each district. And so sometimes it could be your neighbors two blocks away from your home. It happened for me, and I was like, wow.
Yeah.
So, and also checking on them, you know, when you, you know, and, and it's, you know, sometimes to see the condition of some of them that live is, is,
Yeah.
You know, it's sad, but I would recommend you guys, if you can do that.
Yeah, yeah, even just a ride along.
Yeah, it is, it's a good experience, it's, yeah. And I want to say thank you, because I didn't know how many we serve every day, and how many a year, and, you know, I was like, it's incredible what we are doing in our senior center, and all the people that we are helping our community, so I say thank you, Jill, because.
Well, that's almost a wrap. I'm just gonna use this opportunity, I will not go on and on, but the meal program is really more than just a meal. So this is just a nice time to highlight, you know, how it's funded, what it really looks like from the inside and out. So, so the nutrition program is a program for all, it started back in the 70s and was funded by the Older Americans Act. Even though it's for everybody, their target was really for low-income older adults, people of color, people living in rural communities, and those that are socially and economically needy. Like, there is no income limit, there's no asset limit, the meals are open to everybody, which is great, which you found out. You just never know what people need to stay in their own home. People can contribute, Dane County sets that contribution rate, this year it's at five, it's, you know, it goes up every year. But people can contribute whatever they want to, whatever they can afford. And if you're, you, you have to be over 60 to be eligible for the contribution. If you're under 60, the full cost of the meal right now is about $13.60. So that's what the county puts out in terms of what it costs them to serve every meal, so admin, gas, food, all the supplies and that sort of thing. So we've got congregate meals, we have home-delivered meals, this is part of our county contract, so we have a lot of compliance that goes along with this county contract. So it's, again, it's to reduce food insecurity and hunger, promote social isolation, which, thank you to COVID, really, really brought that to the forefront. Those of us working in it knew that the meal isn't really all about that food, particularly when people are coming in, but even the visits at home. And then just to promote the health and well-being of, of older adults, and then gaining access to other services, which you'll see in a little bit, when we have to go through the assessment to see if people qualify for meals. But just a little bit about the funding, and, and I know that federal is spelled wrong, and I just couldn't get to changing it, so I just want to point that out. So anyway, as you can see, most of the money comes from the Older Americans Act. After that, we have nutrition donations, so it is really strongly encouraged, whatever people can afford, even if it's a dollar. If you're getting five meals a week, that really adds up in terms of what the county and the Older Americans Act is subsidizing. Next is the county levy, so that's our county contract. Federal USDA, so those are the grants, that is something that I mentioned earlier on, if, if we were in jeopardy of losing grants, it would, it would be that piece of the pie right there. And then managed care organizations, so that's like a Medicaid waiver that people go on for family care. So then all of a sudden, they are managed under a MCO, it's called. So My Choice was, is one of those, I Care, so they actually have to pay the full price for the meals. And I just want to say, how do we get our money? So it comes from the federal money, comes from the, it's a huge aging network, but all the way from the feds, the Department of Health and Human Services, funnels down to the administration of Community Living Administration on Aging, AOA. Then it goes down to the State Unit on Aging, which is ours is BETA, they call it, the Bureau on Aging Disability Resources. From the state, it goes down to the Area Agencies on Aging, so we are the Dane County Area Agent, Agency on Aging. Milwaukee has an Area Agency on Aging, and then the rest of the state is managed under the umbrella of GUAR, the Greater Wisconsin Area, on Aging Resource. And then that's where we get our money, so it's coming trickling down quite a bit. So for the federal money, it's really based on census data and older adults. For our county money, this is, this is the formula that's used, so it's the Senior Nutrition Program Formula. This is very similar to our case management money, these are the categories that that money is put into. And then percentage-wise, that's how it's divided between all of the nutrition sites, which are also focal points. So senior centers that have meal programs, the county, 17% of that county money gets dumped into this formula, and that's how we're allocated our funding. That's 17%, that's county levy, so that's non-mandated, the county could not fund that if they don't want to, same with case management. So again, these are the formulas the county uses to give us our funding. So here is a look back at our five years of funding. As you can see, 2020 was just about 30,000, and now we're up to 43,000. I know I got a question, why was it 45,000 last year, and now it's 43,000? That funding formula, even though we served more meals, if there is another focal point that had a greater increase percentage-wise, even though they served less, they're gonna get a higher percentage of that funding. So it's really just based on this intricate formula that the county puts the money into and then shoots it back out. But we've come a long way, I think when I first started, we were in the $10,000 range, so. And then what, you know, how many, as, as Mandy mentioned, we were near, not quite 19,000, but, but pretty high up there in meals in 2024. And you can see where other focal points kind of fall within there, Stoughton being a very older community with 25,000. Sun Prairie covers a huge, huge part of Dane County, taking in a lot of other towns around them, including Cottage Grove, Wanakee, we're getting close to them. So, so there, that's our total meals, and then over on the side there is how many hours are allocated to those nutrition site positions. We highlighted 20, but as you know, last year, the Friends funded 15 hours a week for an LTE, which is great. Because when I started asking for that LTE position a couple of years ago, that's when we started feeling a huge impact in our meal program. And so because Mandy splits her time between nutrition and volunteer coordinator, there really isn't enough time to allocate for this program, which is, I'm gonna show you in a few more slides here. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about what comes along with that county funding. As you all know, any kind of government funding, a lot of strings attached, a lot of reporting, a lot of compliance, a lot of admin, more so than ever. In fact, I was at the county, at a meeting today, in person, the first time since COVID, they called us all together, because it's almost budget time, and we start to advocate for more funding, and we collectively, focal points decide, what do we want to ask for? Do we want more case management funding, do we want more nutrition funding? All of us agree that we need more admin funding, because this Peer Place, this is where every person that eats a meal has to be, their data has to go into this Peer Place. So this is a statewide program, which then funnels up to the feds to shows who eats a meal at our center. So Peer Place is a new web-based database that we just, they rolled out last fall. It's gonna be great, but the, the learning curve is pretty, it's pretty difficult right now. We used to have a lot of volunteers doing data input, at this point in time, we cannot. So this is an example of a home-delivered meal assessment. So oftentimes, the social workers have to go through this assessment with them. Again, these are created by the state, we don't create them, we just have to complete them. But every person has to fill out either home-delivered meal or congregate form, once a year. If they eat once, or they eat 100 times, they have to fill out this form. This form is seven pages long, it seems like every year it gets longer, they want to get more data, and I get that. But as I mentioned before, this form also tells us what their risk level is, and if they do need to be referred for other services that we might not be able to provide. As you can see, dressing, bathing, toileting, those kind of things. This form also determines how many days a week they can get meals. That's something that's relatively new, because the funding has decreased, it's just not keeping up with demand. So it used to be you could put, if they qualified, you'd put them on for five days a week. Now they actually have to qualify, and based on the criteria, they can get up to one day, up to five days a week. So again, this is seven, seven pages. As we go through, you can see what the question is, is there a follow-up question, and then where we're supposed to refer someone. So if they're falling, we would refer, you know, maybe a no falls class, or we can refer them to a dietitian. If they have mental health, there's a depression screening on one of these pages, I'm not gonna go through all seven. But this just gives you a snapshot of the complexity of this program. And again, then this seven-page document has to be entered into Peer Place. The congregate assessment is a little bit less, I guess, less questions, it's only two pages. And they don't have to complete the bottom portion, but we absolutely need the, the top portion. So again, we have to track, you know, come July, if somebody new comes in, like, we have to make sure we know if they've been there or not before. Even if they've eaten at a different focal point in Dane County, they still have to fill out a form at our center, and we have to log them into the Peer Place. Their questions, and most people are happy to fill this stuff out, I think people like to know, like, oh, they care if I've lost weight, you know, they, they care if I don't have enough money to buy food. But this, again, is the information that funnels back up to the federal level. These are just some of the reasons, as Dane County does surveys, you know, why do people come? And this kind of speaks to the social aspect, which we, which we know. There's just a lot going on around that mealtime, and we try to piggyback programs before and after, just based on transportation. These are the averages over to the side there, 43% go once or twice a week, 36%, three to five times, 21%, one to three times. And then, you know, this is almost where a lot of folks get half of their daily meal intake, and one out of four diners in Dane County is food insecure. And then for home-delivered meals, they also do a, a survey with them, and, you know, why is it important to me? What does it mean to get a home-delivered meal? And as the mayor kind of pointed out, you know, you're checking on that, that person. Most of, most of the folks, almost 60% said, it gives me, it's a nice feeling knowing somebody that cares, and it gives them structure, it's somebody to talk to. It's, it's truly not uncommon monthly for a driver to come back and say they didn't answer their door, they're not at home. I mean, that happens weekly, but then that follow-up oftentimes, you know, could lead to they were on the floor. You know, they, they, ambulance just took them to the hospital, so it really is, again, more than just that food. So for them, it's more than a meal, but I want to talk a little bit about what that position is. As I talked about those 20 hours and bringing on that LTE position, because this meal program has grown, and again, as the funding grows, so does the administration piece of this. So I talked a little bit about the screenings that we have to do. So it takes up case managers' time to make sure, you know, we gotta go through those screening, make sure they're eligible, figure out how many meals they get. And then we have to also, for congregate, oftentimes have to sit next to somebody and help them fill out that form. So those are the yearly screenings that we have to conduct on every single person that eats. Last year, we had 400, about 430 unduplicated diners, so that's 430 people that filled out one form or the other, home-delivered or congregate. As I mentioned, the screenings, all the data has to go into that statewide database, Peer Place. Along with that county contract for nutrition, Mandy's required to train the volunteers in the kitchen, and no less than six hours to provide, we provide that training to them. So if you can imagine, we have, you know, probably 20 kitchen helpers or more to try to manage all those schedules, to get them trained, takes several days. She's required to provide quarterly nutrition education, and then we also have to track who gets a flyer, who gets a placemat, and put them in the Peer Place data, database. We have to submit monthly meal reports to the county, we have to, she does, she has to attend county meetings and an annual training. We have to track the donations daily, and then we take those donations and they all go back to Dane County. So we just fill out a payment request, and it goes right back to Dane County, we don't keep any of the, the donations. Mandy spends a lot of time creating a delivery route, because as you saw her mention on the video, we have five routes, with around 10 people on each route, but because Pittsburgh's so big, and you can't have food in the meal bags for more than an hour, it's against their standards for safety reasons. So anyway, we have to have five routes, but every time a new client comes on, whether they're in the country, or they're over in Ally Drive, or they're in apartments, they have to be added to the route. And sometimes you'll have a route that has like maybe 15 people, and then one that only has five, and you want to kind of make sure that people aren't out on the road a long time. So she's constantly changing routes and adding new people, taking people off, which takes a lot of time. She spends a great deal of time on a monthly schedule, it's, it's just like a big spreadsheet that gives me a headache that, you know, because we have to have five in the kitchen. Sometimes it's three to five, but five drivers, no less per day. And so figuring out, some people drive once a week, some people drive every other week, some people drive once a month, some people get sick, blah, blah, blah. So that, that takes a couple of weeks to fill those monthly calendars. And then, of course, somebody always goes on vacation, or they get sick, or so they have to babysit. So February is notorious for people going south, taking vacations, so there, she counted, there were 32 times that she had to fill a driver position, because we have to take the meals out, and it's not, you know, if need be, oftentimes Chris will run a route out, the social workers will run routes out. But the administrative piece right here alone could almost be a full-time job. So again, having the LTE position onboard now has been so helpful, because now Chris can be in the kitchen. I'm not even talking about overseeing the help that's in the kitchen, because somebody has to be there to make sure, you know, the meals are packaged right, the food comes in at nine from the caterer, and they're off and running, filling all the bags, and they don't get done till about 10:30, and then they're right into setting up for congregate. So it's just this, you know, it's a well-oiled machine, but it takes a lot of work. So I just kind of wanted to highlight that the meal for the older adults is, is a lot more than the food, and the program itself is a lot more than just serving the food for us on the backside. So anyway, that is kind of it in a nutshell, I'm really proud of the meal program and how we've grown it over the years. I think this really, this is a snapshot of people that come every single week, you know, I didn't just pull these out from years ago. I think we've created an environment that really lets people feel at home. And again, it's more than a meal, it's, it's socializing, and friendships are made, and couples are formed. And Jim, with his roses, you know, we, Mandy got roses donated for Valentine's Day, and so every home-delivered meal person got a rose. And I forgot to bring those cute bags that we collaborate with so many different schools, and they have the funniest jokes, and, and there's just so much about it, that's wonderful. So anyway, I wanted to just sign off with saying thank you, and for listening, and if there's any questions now, or in the future, reach out to Mandy. And as the mayor mentioned, anytime you have a moment, stop over for lunch, it's a great way to connect with your constituents, you don't have to tell me you're coming. You know, just mingle, they would love it. And, and again, delivering meals, there's five routes, you could do it five times, if you really want a snapshot of people that are benefiting from this meal program. So that's all I got.
Thanks, Jill.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks for coming out. I do have one question.
Yeah.
In terms of the funding, the Older Americans Act, is that also federal funding, or?
That is federal funding, yeah.
So the Older Americans Act and the federal USDA funding is both federal?
Yeah, two different funding streams.
And the county money that is coming from the county?
Right, non-mandated.
So that's local.
Yeah.
But yeah, so almost, I mean, more than 50% of the program is federal funds.
Yeah, yeah, and it's gonna, unless they increase, they're, they're increasing them a little bit, and it was reauthorized last year, so it'll go through 2029. But there's always a lot of advocacy about increasing funding. But there's always a lot of advocacy about increasing funding. Last year, they did, they did give a little more funding to the care. So Older Americans Act does more than just meals. It does caregiving, some community services like transportation. It does a lot of tribal units, funds. So there's, you know, it's a whole alphabet of, you know, Title III, A, B, C, that kind of stuff. So it's more than just meals. So what I'm speaking to is just the meals.
Got it.
Yeah.
I have a question. Do you have the data from the last 10 years? How many wheels, meals, you know, we have provided in the last 10 years, the increase?
Oh, yeah.
That one could be a good idea to see if, you know,
Yeah.
in our city, if we started like, I don't know, 5,000 and now we are 18, 556 or, you know?
I think Mandy even had that slide in there and it was so much data, I took it out. But yeah, no, I'm happy to say that too.
No, I would like to see for curiosity, to see how it has gone.
Yeah.
And what is the trend? You know, I mean, is the trend is going to grow? It's growing like a, what is the percentage that it's growing every year? You know what I mean?
I can't give you the percent off my head, but it's like this. We really peaked in 20, right after COVID. We were up to just around this, we're at the highest we've ever served. But unduplicated, we were around 550. And last year, we were at 428. So right after COVID, we were one of the dining sites that exploded. A lot of people had trouble getting people back into the building. We did not. So it's kind of tapered a little bit now. So, but I can get you that data, no problem. Any other questions?
Is there, how do we advertise these volunteer opportunities? Is there any other methods that we can explore if there's those needs?
Yeah, I think that there are. I mean, we do, she uses social media a lot. We've done the Pittsburgh neighborhood groups. I know the mayor is great about passing along information on her website, Facebook, in the newsletter and the what's happening. But there's some more places we need to tap into still.
Jill, I just want to thank you for coming this evening. And as somebody who has visited a number of times the Senior Center over the years, in particular at lunchtime, it is great to see the service that's provided to our community by you and your team and how impactful it really is. So thanks to you and your team for all you do to serve our older community members.
Absolutely. It's a pleasure.
So if someone has to make a donation, so it doesn't stay here?
Correct.
How do we make sure that if I want to make a donation, it stays in Pittsburgh? No, it doesn't go to the county? So I need to make the donation to the Friends or the Senior Center?
Well, we have a donation fund as well within the city, an account that can only be used for a nutrition program.
Okay.
And you can just direct those funds. And we've had that conversation where we will get families that give us money for meals. And if they specifically say, we want this to pay for a meal, we send it right back to the county. If you, if a donor, because I always try to clarify because it can get confusing. Because the city is very generous in funding, you know, 45,000 is in funding this program completely with you staff time and operating and that sort of thing. So if they said, well, we want this to go to your nutrition program. And so maybe, the Friends is a great spot too because they're doing the emergency meals, they pay for veterans, that sort of thing. Otherwise, we can use it for special events. Maybe we just want to have a pizza day and we don't do a meal program. So it's just, it's just us making sure that we speak to the donor to make sure we know where they want those funds directed.
Okay.
Well, thank you so very much. This was great.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you coming out.
You're welcome.
We can move on to item seven on the agenda, announcements. Our next committee of the whole meeting will be April 23rd, 2025. That is right after the swearing in of the new class of alders. And so that always has a very specific agenda related to onboarding the new council. Anything you want to add about that, Chad? I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Motion by Alder Wheeler, second by the mayor. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I did not say aye, but. Gabriella thought this was a finance committee meeting.
Oh, wait. Oh, yeah.
Thanks for the short meeting.
We are adjourned at 8:14 PM. Thank you.